And these are round numbers. These numbers will, some of these numbers will fluctuate, like the project grant. That's one sidewalk grant that's on the books for the twenty-three budget. So it, next year, we may get a big grant or may not get any grant. So that dollar amount will fluctuate dramatically. Uh, highway users fund, that is generally, that's state money, but it's generally, uh, gas tax. So we, we get an allocation based off our population, uh, from the state and the feds for, for gas tax. Uh, and we use that and that's broken out accordingly to the capital and operations. Property tax, that's pretty self-explanatory. That comes out of the general fund, which is paid for by property tax. Road and bridge tax, that's managed or goes through the county. And so we get a portion of it and that portion is pretty predictable. This twenty-twenty-three was three hundred and thirty-five hundred thousand dollars. And that, that can be adjusted up. I think it's, this is a base, I don't, it's in that, it was in that memo that was in the packet. But that can be, um, increased by the county only. The city does not have a, I mean, we can ask them to raise it or we can ask them to lower it. Uh, but that is an action taken by the county. Permits and fees, those are collected to the city. Uh, and the big one at the bottom there is the franchise fee. So included in that eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is the Avista fee. Sparklight pays a franchise fee. Sunshine Disposal pays a franchise fee. The Port pays a small one. I'm thinking I'm missing one more, but that accumulatively, accumulatively, that is roughly eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year. So that is, that is how we are funded. And if you remember the, the, the language within, that was in the, the franchise. You add all that up, that's about six to seven million dollars annually that goes towards our, uh, transportation network. And as I said earlier, it could go up if we have a bigger grant or it could go down if we don't have a grant. Uh, specifically, so what are we doing out in the, on the streets right now? So I will say the money that is invested on the front end, so maintenance kind, I mean, we, we've talked about the car analogy, we've talked about the roof analogy. It is much cheaper to maintain than to replace. And so, uh, water is the enemy of streets, as is water is a lot of enemies, has a lot of enemies out there. So cracked ceiling, you can see the picture of in the upper right-hand column, that is cracked ceiling. So you'll see guys out there, uh, it's hot, it's messy, it's out there with oil and they, they're going out there literally sealing the cracks on the road. So this summer, we've put a priority, you can see the streets listed, that those are the roads that we were looking at replacing or crack sealing, not replacing, to trying to prevent water seeping into the cracks that would get into the base layer, cause more disruption in the, in the road. And eventually, once, once there's enough cracks and enough water gets within, within those cracks, that starts degrading the road sub-base and that requires a complete replacement. Base repair, that's another, um, that's the next level. So if water has gotten in there or it was not compacted or constructed correctly, or you had a leaky culvert or something happened, uh, you'd get damage to the base. And so we will cut that section out, dig it out, replace it. And that's just a specific area. So, you know, there's, there's roads, yes, there's a lot of roads in the city of Lewiston that has, um, you know, you have that wobble on it. And so going in there and maybe it's a specific place, you can replace the base, uh, and trying, trying to get that road to just get a little bit further. Once you start getting to base repair, that means you're probably getting closer to a full reconstruction. Uh, we've done stormwater assessments, uh, cleaning up the roadway edges. That's basically as you have more vegetation and, and, well, it is vegetation and obstructions that get into the roadway, continue to pop and degrade that asphalt. You may have noticed, we've been out there making our pavement markings and striping. Uh, and if you know, if you go out there, uh, they, basically the, the TELSPAR breakaway posts. A lot of the posts in the valley are still wood. Trying to get out there to, to replace them with TELSPAR, so they have a breakaway. So when somebody hits them, they fold over instead of, you know, if it's an old wooden post, it may go into, it may not break or it may go into a hundred different pieces. So TELSPAR will give you a little bit more predictable. When it's hit at a certain speed, it will just tip over. So again, investment on the front end as far as maintenance is how you prevent your streets from degrading to a point where you have to invest millions of dollars on them. Uh, questions that we get most often of is grants. Where are you spending your, where are you putting your efforts in grants? And I think the state has put a lot of, uh, options out there and we've, we, safety and getting children to school. And so there's Seventeenth Street and that's the one, well, one on Seventeenth. There's a segment between Thirteenth and Fifteenth, uh, and it's primary access to Jennifer Middle School. That one was a grant through the state and Nineteenth Avenue. So Seventeenth going north-south, Nineteenth Avenue going east-west to McSorley. McSor, the, the Nineteenth is just Fifteenth to Sixteenth. One section that will complete that sideways, sidewalk, um, segment that's missing to Sorley. So that's, they're, they're pretty close to each other and that will help complete that sidewalk network. And those are paid for by grants. And unfortunately, those, I think, I think them, I can't remember which one, which. One was this year and one is next year. And so it takes a while. When you, when you're, when you apply for grants, you have to meet the terms of the grant and sometimes the schedule or is not the schedule that you would, would like to see. So, you know, people say, well, why is that one taking so long? It's because that was the condition of the grant, that it was going to be designed in twenty-three and constructed in twenty-four. Twelfth site, Twelfth Street sidewalk infill. If you're not aware, there is a program that the city instituted, I don't know, a couple decade or at least a decade ago. Philo, so fee in lieu of sidewalk. That, so if a developer is coming in and doing work, you know, making improvements to a lot or, you know, building a house that is on a street that has no sidewalk, nor is it anywhere near sidewalk, the city can approve or can accept a fee in lieu of that sidewalk, where the city accepts the money, the developer or the builder pays the city and we take that money. It's typically annually about thirty thousand dollars, it's not a lot, but it, we put it in the fund. And so then when we have enough money, we go out and we build. So Twelfth Street sidewalk, uh, it's kind of hemmed in between Warner and Brighton. And so whether it's orchards, elementary or the high school, um, a lot of pedestrian or kids walking to either the elementary school or the high school. So we, we use that Philo money to infill sidewalk. Uh, that one is in, that we're designing that one in-house. So and there's no grant money tied to it. It's just based off of how much money is in the Philo fund and availability of staff to, um, design it and get it done. So those are our sidewalk funded projects. So outside of, uh, what the city of Lewiston is doing, there's a lot going on this summer in the valley. You may have already noticed, you know, the, the overpass out towards the casino is already, uh, broken ground. Think you'll start seeing the Memorial Bridge. ITD has a great website if you're interested in learning more about the project. I just Googled Memorial Bridge Lewiston and I, brought me to this, this is a rendering. They're basically re, it's reconstructing, so they're saving the piers underneath the, the bridge deck. Uh, so this bridge was completed in nineteen forty-nine, saving the piers and taking one side of the, the, the deck off and reconstructing it this year. Then next year, they'll switch over and do the other side. So it is a two-year project. They will funnel traffic down and so it's a four-lane bridge. They'll funnel it down into two lanes, two-way traffic. So it, obviously, um, whether it's harvest or people get into the mill, it will have impact on industry, to tourists, to just you and I trying to get to work or get out of town every day. So that one will have a huge impact. Uh, that is an ITD project. Uh, one other project that IT's, ITD's taken the lead on is, uh, the Snake River Road. We're calling it Snake River Road, they're calling it the, the bypass. But those railroad tracks that were taken out two years ago, three years ago, ITD kind of worked, well, they did work with the city and was trying to get that project taken care of, kind of on the same track as the overpass out of the casino. Whether it was, I think it was mostly prices were so high when they bid it. I think they've, they've bid it at least twice. They now have a pre-construction meeting, so they have awarded it or in the process of awarding it. So those snake, those railroad tracks, the crossings across, uh, going out to the overpass, uh, and then one on Snake River Road. So ITD has taken the lead on that project. The city was, has agreed to just pay our portion for it, uh, and I'm thankful that that's now finally moving forward. Wash Dot, uh, has flirted off and on repainting the Blue Bridge. Do you know the schedule on that? Is it this year or next year?
They're in design.
Okay, they're in design, but that project is moving forward, uh, painting the Blue Bridge. Initially, there was a time when it looked like all Wash Dot, ITD and the city and Clarkston, we're all gonna do all these projects all over. But now it seems like they've spread them out a little bit. Clarkston is not moving forward with their bridge street roundabout that was opened. The bid opened earlier this spring, but they are now set to rebid it and this fall. So a lot of work going on in the valley, not all of it is tied to the city. Am I missing one more project? Yeah, that way, yep. So a lot of things going on, not all of them are affiliated or led by the city of Lewiston. Okay, so talking about STP projects, so Surface Transportation Pro, Program. So that is a federal program. Those funds go through the MPO. So, uh, they're programmed through the MPO, uh, the city requests them. Uh, the city is the largest, um, entity within the MPO that's eligible for the IT, or for the STP funds. But doesn't mean we're the only one. The MPO can request them, Nesper's County can request them. So just to be perfectly clear for, for the council, other MPO members and myself, when we say, oh, we're gonna take these ST, STP funds and we're gonna program this project and this project and this project, you still have to go to the MPO and they have to program them before you just spend them. But the, the city's been very fortunate to, to use these, these STP funds. And all of these projects that are in front of you now that you see were programmed a long time ago. Well before I got here and probably well before most of you got here. Snake River Road, uh, originally was phase one. So that was the, the roundabout that you see the picture there, that was phase one. So that one completed probably about ten years ago, two thousand and ten. It is the next one in the queue for construction. So typically what happens with STP projects, you apply for the design, uh, and you get it, you build up your funds. And so, um, the city's generally allocated, I got the specific number, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars a year. So that is what our, well, that's what the STP portion is designated for the city. So you have to build that fund up and it's, it's a large pool within the state of Idaho. And so as those funds come in, everybody takes their turn spending those dollars down. And so you need to build that program up. So five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and that, that will fluctuate depending on the demand within the, within the state. Our design for Snake River Road Phase Two, so that is from the roundabout to Eleventh Street, it will be, we will have enough funds to move forward in twenty-twenty-five. So construction for Snake River Road Phase Two, twenty-twenty-five. And again, that one was programmed decades ago. So this is where, maybe that's not the highest and best, you know, we talked about public comment tonight about Brighton. Why wouldn't we put that towards Brighton? Well, this been in, this has been in the queue, so you have to be, you have to, sometimes you have to pay. If, if you said, nope, we're never gonna do Snake River, you would have to pay the money back, what, what's been invested in Snake River. And so I'll get into a little bit more detail of how we've planned and worked with STP funds. But a, at this point, my recommendation is to not change course dramatically with the projects. Specifically why, you know, construction in twenty-twenty-five for Snake River Road, uh, is, is just around the corner. Ninth Street Grade is the other one, uh, it's kind of right near that same timeframe, twenty-twenty-seven. That is the, so it, it changes names. It's, you know, as you go up the hill, there's Ninth Street and Eighth Street. You might call it Eighth Street Grade, you might call it Ninth Street Grade, but as you wind up the hill there, uh, it, we just did a resurfacing on that road not too long ago, I think it was last summer, the summer before. The, the surface looks okay and actually even the, the, the concrete guardrail looks okay. But what's underneath that road is not great. So that, that needs to be reconstructed and brought up to modern standards. Uh, so that one's twenty-twenty-seven. So Brighton Phase One, uh, we have, we are currently wrapping up, uh, the design phase of that project. It should be completed by the end of this calendar year of twenty-twenty-three. The details of Brighton. So the way the city has been spending their STP funds is to dedicate it to a large, single project. What we have discovered is that may not be sustainable as we move forward. Included in your packet was the top, what was it, the top twenty capital improvement projects that are scheduled. So if you want to take on each of these large projects with STP funding, you should be prepared to wait. So this is Brighton Phase One, so that's fourth to seventh. And I just said, we're, we're moving forward, should have design complete within the, the calendar year of, of FY twenty-twenty-three. So now you, you, we're gonna be doing the Snake River Road project, the Ninth Street Grade project, and we're still gonna have to build up more of that STP funding. So now we're looking at twenty-thirty-one for right-ofway acquisition. Though, and that's if you, it, this is just relying solely on STP funds. So that's the, the right-ofway acquisition means you go out and you reach out to the neighbors and say, here's what the property appraises at, would you be willing to sell this in front of it? And so it's, it is a negotiation and so that, that takes time. Additionally, it still takes more time to build up the funding for the construction. So now we're talking construction of Brighton Phase One, fourth to seventh, twenty-thirty-six. When that is completed, we start on Phase Two. And that is assuming that the city does not wanna spend, the city, Nesper's County or the MPO does not wanna spend any other STP funds on any other projects. So putting all of your STP funds in Brighton, we roll forward into the design in twenty-thirty-five and then a similar movement forward in right-ofway and construction. So you can see the date of construction to complete Brighton, fourth, all the way to Thane, which I think is what the goal is, is twenty-fifty-two. This is what happens when we use one source of money to plan, to design, to acquire right-ofway and construct a large-scale project of that, that magnitude. And what, what, I went back in preparation for this discussion, I went back and looked at, I think it was two thousand and ten, they did the Bride didn't, Bride and Corridor Corridor Study. The right-ofway for fourth to seventh estimate was two hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're currently estimated to spend three point one million dollars. So the estimates and the guiding documents that we had thirteen years ago have changed as we've tried to acquire more money just through the single STP program. And that puts us in this, you know, a, a, and it, there's been some conversations of improvements along Brighton. You see a lot of investment, private investment. Well, you can't do that right now because we're building Brighton project. Well, it may be a while before those improvements actually show up at your doorstep. So we, we get put into this situation of trying to get this project moving forward, but you gotta fund it. And STP is just not gonna give you the funds necessary to build a project of that nature in a timely manner. So, um, two projects or two street, two streets that get spoken about more than Brighton is Twenty-first Street and the intersection of Fifth and Brighton. I will say anytime I'm out and people wanna know what's going on, they wanna know when's Twenty-first Street and Fifth and Brighton intersection being, being fixed. So we went out, uh, and did some coring on both those areas. So there was like thirty-six cores, I think, thirty-ish on Twenty-first Street and two or three done on Fifth and Brighton. I was shocked. Twenty-first Street has no base. There is no base that's whole, you know, so when I talk about base repair, there's no base in Twenty-first. Uh, and bad asphalt. Uh, Fifth and Brighton has some base, it's not great base, but it has some base and it's got bad asphalt, which is why that it started to, to rut in the way, the rut, rut in the way that we have. Neither wa, I mean, Fifth and Brighton, you, I showed you the timeline when that would be improved and that's not gonna work for those ruts. We have to do something with that. And Twenty-first Street has no funding, it has no, it's not on the STP schedule. It's not on any project schedule, it's not, we're gonna continue to apply for grants, but there, there's no schedule for funding Twenty-first Street. And with no base, all alternatives are to continue to do what we're doing. It's just patch it as we are, uh, and wait for it to go to dirt or do a mill and overlay, which is a Band-Aid because you have no base. So you, you can mill it out, mill the asphalt out, put good asphalt on top of that, of no base. And that will last, I don't know, year, two, three, maybe? I, I mean, there is, there's no structure to provide, I mean, the truck traffic that goes up Twenty-first Street with no base, it's just gonna eat that asphalt alive. The other one is the reconstruction. So, and I just said, there is no funding available for, and I don't know, Twenty-first Street, if you look at the CIP, is, this is twenty-twenty number, so about ten million dollars. So we don't have ten million dollars to do a reconstruction right now. So we, we reached out to some engineers and some consultants, some contractors to see what, what, what are, you know, what are our options? I mean, besides the obvious of do nothing, mill and overlay or reconstruct. There was a consultant that reached out to, or, you know, answered our calls and said, there's a, it's called fiber seal. And essentially you put structure within the asphalt, you put fibers into that asphalt. Uh, and we, you know, hasn't been done in Idaho, it's pretty, I shouldn't say common, but it has been done Arizona, California, Utah, south. And so this, um, outfit said they, they're interested in moving into Idaho and, and in the market. So we put out an RFP for a design build for, uh, engineer and the contractor to tell us is Twenty-first, uh, are they a viable option for, for this fiber seal? So that actually, the, the design build contract will be on your agenda for next week, um, for your consideration. And so, you know, it, we have, you know, going back to the budget that I discussed earlier, we have funds available within capital, we would have to move some funds around to, to do this fiber, fiber seal. We may not be able to do all of it, we may be able to do a portion, but we need to look at it, it, one, is it, is it a candidate that will hand, hold up? I mean, cause if it doesn't last any longer than a mill and overlay, I don't think it's worth our time for the extra cost. Nor, we need to get about ten to fifteen years out of it in order for us to adequately, uh, design, you know, to save, to get the funding, design and do a total reconstruction. This is, this is, I'm not calling it a Band-Aid, but it is not the final, final solution. Once you do something like that, you need to replace the ADA, uh, ped ramps, sidewalk ped ramps. So that adds an extra cost, uh, which, which, you know, it, it's necessary. So we will be doing that along with the, with the, uh, fiber seal. And that project is, we wanna get it done this summer or fall, August, September. So that's the, that's the schedule. I still have a, you know, one is a viable, two is we have enough money to pay for the section that will make a difference. Uh, and three, how soon can we get it down? So that is the, that is the plan. And the same thing would be done with Fifth and Brighton. Once, once the consultant contractor is in town to do Twenty-first, we'll have them do Fifth and Brighton. Okay, last, last, uh, slide, um, MPO. So the MPO brings in a lot of planning money. So I think there's a, uh, somewhat misconception of, uh, engineers in the valley that work for the local agencies or the elected sometimes that say, hey, can we just go get money from the MPO for that? Uh, and the MPO is a planning organization, so they don't pay for design. They, they, they facilitate the STP funds, but they don't have money to say, hey, let's go design Twenty-first Street. They don't have the money for that, that, that's not their purpose. They are a planning, um, agency. So one thing that they did, uh, and they've, they've worked, they've worked with the whole valley wide. There's, there's multiple transportation plans and corridor studies that they've done across all of the agencies that participate in it. But the ones we're working on with them now is a citywide pavement index. And so they've actually, uh, just completed the work, I think, last week. The, the company is out of Nevada, I think, Arizona. Uh, they have this fancy van that comes and they drive all across, they, they've driven every road in the city of Lewiston's network. Uh, and they compile all this data, uh, and look at, you know, the conditions of the road. They've looked at, uh, they'll be looking at sidewalk and laundry list of things, other considerations, uh, and come back and give us a, a report and say, you know, this is, this is your pavement index. The city and our strategic plan adopted a goal for a pavement condition index of seventy. So you can think of zero being nothing and one hundred being perfect. Seventy is, which is a C, so we wanna see. The, the narrative that the staff and, and some people that are, you know, MPO is that Lewiston, if you look at Brighton, you look at Twenty-first Street, you look at Thane, those are our, are, are arterials. I'm not even gonna guess what those pavement indexes are, but they're not seventy. Your general assumption has been that our pavement in, our pavement isn't terrible. It's those arterials with five lanes that are, that are bringing our average down. If we can just get those back up and, and continue to maintain our locals and collectors, we, we should be able to sustain that seventy benchmark that we've set for ourselves. I may get this pavement index back and tell you I was completely wrong, so, uh, stay tuned. Thane Road Corridor Study, that one is out. Uh, I think I actually got the email that, uh, they're wrapping up the scope. So we have, we'll have a, uh, engineer onboard doing a corridor study. And so my goal, and I think I've said it multiple times, when it comes to transportation planning, is to have you plan for all of our, our main arterials. And so arterial loop, Main Street, Snake River, Brighton, Thane, down Twenty-first, back into Main Street. Uh, and so the, the ones that don't have, uh, funding or necessarily a plan right now would be Main Street, Twenty-first and Thane. So Thane, uh, is the one that probably, and we, we had considered briefly doing Twenty-first Street and Thane at the same time, but that, that's just too much, too, too big of a, too big of a ask. So Thane Road, looking at, you, we, we did a kind of a, an analysis on Tenth and Thane previously, I think, last summer. So Thane is looking at, uh, just generally the character of the street. What do we want it to look like? How much traffic does it handle? What section is best addressed? Obviously looking at, uh, Tenth and Thane and that intersection, how, you know, I spent a lot of time this weekend driving around town, looking at yards and streets and how things are functioning. And I am amazed the amount of traffic that basically takes Tenth across Brighton to Thane and whether they're going to Twenty-first or the high school. That, that, that area needs, needs some focus and, and, in forecasting out, planning, looking at how this traffic's gonna function, who are the users of Thane? And I think right now the, the general conversation is, there's two users. There's the users who actually have businesses on Thane and then there's the users who live in the orchards. So how do we get both users to feel like Thane is an adequate street? Because I think right now, I don't feel like the users of that, both users, feel like that is, it is meeting their needs. So Thane Road Corridor Study, you'll, you'll hear a lot more of that over the next year. The next one that is just now coming out is a Safety Action Plan. And that is for the valley wide, so that is all of the users within the MPO will be participating in the Safety Action Plan. That is a new program that I, it's a federal program, I'm not too familiar with it, but it should open up some avenues for us for, uh, future safety grants. And we'll, we'll have more information on that once we know more. So that was a lot of information. I didn't get interrupted, so I can go back to slides if you wanna talk about a specific issue or I can stop talking and just let you go.
Counselor Lick.
Let's go back to, uh, Fifth and Main and Twenty-first Street.
You have to speak up, Counselor, I know there's folks at home.
Fifth and Brighton and Twenty-first Street. So I obviously, uh, do a lot of driving and twice now I've seen a loaded truck, like big, an eighteen-wheeler, come through Fifth and Brighton and their load, like, because of that. So when I think of safety plan, I'm like, I don't know, I get that the feds set that up, that we have to have that to access. But I think about what's that gonna cost us? What do we need to do? What, do you have ideas of how we get this? And I know you said we had some capital that maybe we can, but to me, those two things, you're exactly right. We have to address those and we can't fund the complete fix. But can we fund them both based on what you know, um, without huge massive sacrifices to other? Cause at this point, that's my, when we look at the budget, like, these have to be top priority. We're gonna lose somebody because of these roads. I mean, that's just where I'm at.
So I will say, so breaking out Fifth and Brighton from Twenty-first Street, Fifth and Brighton will happen this year. I will commit that Fifth and Brighton will be, so the, the benefit of Fifth and Brighton having bad base, but having a base, a mill and overlay will, will last longer than on Twenty-first Street. So if, say, the fiber seal comes in on Twenty-first Street and we, we're short ten percent and we gotta make up budget somewhere, we could probably make up budget by just doing a regular mill and overlay on Fifth and Brighton. I, I, I don't know where all these chips fall. Or if, you know, fiber seal comes back and says, yeah, and we're, we're not going anywhere near any of these roads, we will still mill and overlay and take care of Fifth and Brighton. We have, we've reached out to the, the asphalt companies and they have given us quotes. I know what it's gonna cost, it's just a matter of getting on their schedule. But we thought we could probably get the cost down when they're coming in to do Twenty-first Street. So that's why that one's lumped in there. But I, I can't commit. But I, I can't commit that 21st will be done in one phase altogether this summer, just because of, it's, it's so large, but I will commit that Fifth and Brighton will be done this summer, or this calendar year. I, yeah, and I, I mean, I've gotten, like I said, number one, number two, I, I'm in year two here, but roads, roads and conditions like that, I do not want Lewiston to have that reputation of, you know, let's, you know, it's the town where you spill your coffee. That can't, that can't be. I mean, we, we will always have plenty of projects and, and more projects than money, but things like Fifth and Brighton just can't, can't happen.
Counselor, did you?
I'm sorry.
What, Director, what can we do to speed that up?
Which project?
Fifth and Brighton.
Fifth and Brighton. At this point, I mean, it, I wanna get, I wanna get something back from the consultant on the fiber seal before we commit to it. I mean, the, the problem, the problem that we've ran into is trying to get on schedule. And so if we're, we're in Ju, I mean, the schedule is August, September. So if we've made it to June, I think we're, we are, we are close enough to where, let's see, let's play this process out. Let's see what, see what we come back with, and, and if, if, I will know within a month of if it's looking promising or if it's not, and be coming back to you and say, we're, we're gonna pivot, we're gonna go to a, a traditional mill and overlay, uh, and get that addressed.
Number three, it was Kelly Schroeder.
Oh, um, just a question on the fiber seal. You had said that it's been not done in Idaho, but it's been done in, like, southern cities? So does, are temperatures here?
They have sure, I mean, that's part of the, the design build process, that they have assured me that they've done, um, high climates that have snow, climates that get heat, similar to us. Um, they, they've also, you know, we asked, we have, uh, a lot of streets that have steep grids, and so asphalt tends to buckle underneath. You know, we've asked them kind of the preliminary questions that, are you sure? And they've said, they, they've laid these things down, mats, you know, and, and it's, it's not, I know they can do it. It's just, how many mats are they putting down? How much are they adding to it that just adds to the cost? And pretty soon, we can only afford a block, and it's not gonna do any good. So, um, I, I'm not gonna speak too deep into details because I, I've met with them and it's been a while, and so I know there's been a lot of conversations since I've kind of stepped off onto other projects, but I know that's, we'll get some answers here real soon. Cause they're, when we advertised it for the design build, we said, this needs to take place August, September in that, in that window, and they, they committed to it, so.
Thank you for what you do.
Counselor Schipkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Director, on the major Brighton project, the whole thing that was projected out to 2052, um, we stayed with the SDP. So the other options of funding it, you would be basically funding it with property taxes? Or what's the other options?
But it goes, it goes back to, you know, how, that's, I get the easy work. It's your job. That's the hard part, to find the funding for it. And so if you go back all the way to, you know, there's, there's, there's always grants. Unfortunately, there's just not enough grants to go around. STP is a good way to infuse money, but it, maybe it's property tax. Maybe it's, uh, you know, if you looked at that recommendation, there's, um, you know, the franchise fee was one that obviously didn't pass to go from 1% to 3%. Um, the road and bridge tax can be raised additionally, uh, a little, and bring up a little bit more revenue. Um, property tax is, is, is an op, I mean, that is the one that's the, the lowest, the easiest, the, the lowest hanging fruit is always property tax, because you, you approve it. Whereas some of these other things, the franchise fees, the, the road and bridge tax, those are either brought out to the voters or brought out to the, um, to the county that they have to approve it. I don't wanna make it sound like, oh yeah, you just raised property tax and everybody's happy. That, cause obviously, the system did not degrade to the state that it is in today overnight. So it's not like any of us here have a direct, we're, we're not the ones that are responsible for it, but we're the ones that are responsible to fix it. And so looking back in through there, it's unfortunate that we've now seen a major increase in property values, and property taxes have gone up so much. And so now we're looking at find, alternative ways to find funding. There, there is no easy answer.
And I guess my question was to, for the public, like was presented by the fellow that was here earlier, is these are our options to, if we wanna move it up, these are what we're gonna have to do, you know?
Counselor Lick.
Um, so the URA is involved in the Brighton project, right? But there, that's not different money. It's still taxpayer money that, right? And so there is money raised for Brighton.
So the URA currently, uh, so since it is STP funds, the URA is paying for the local match for the design. So currently the city for Brighton is, well, out of my budget, there is no money being spent for the Brighton. It's either coming out of the STP funds or the local match is being paid for by the URA. The URA is funded by a tax increment. So as the property values rise, that increment goes specifically towards that URA district that is contained within that.
So when we talk about franchise fee, franchise fee failed, that would've spread out the cost, um, gave it, we gave it to the voters, um, we're down to including it in your budget, right? I mean, the top 20 out of how many projects, right? I mean, this is, and I agree that arterial roads, that, that needs to be our focus. Um, some cities are privatizing roads. Is that what we have to look at? I mean, is that something you've ever had a conversation about? Cause at this point, I, you know, I'm like, what do we do?
Yeah, I mean, that, uh, the, the considerations are, yes, I mean, not privatize, but create a highway district. That's something that's, I mean, the city of Boise has, is within its own highway district. Um, I, I mean, sidebar, which is interesting, somebody once came to me, I think I was still in Southern County, wanted to buy the Southway Bridge from us for a dollar, and then they set up a toll and collect tolls. So there, there are, I mean, there are companies that will go out and do things like that. I mean, you, you, they don't do it to not make money, though. So privatizing isn't really necessarily an option, but, um, I thought I would throw that out there, that somebody did wanna buy that bridge.
I, I'm just, uh, again, I, I hear numbers like 13 years ago, when, you know, this conversation of Brighton started happening, 225,000. Now we're at 3.1 million. We keep doing this, doing overlays, doing Band-Aids. To me, we're still kicking things, kicking cans down the road. We're not allowing for growth because our infrastructure continues to be your bane of existence, and I would rather it not be. I'd like to get us a win, so, um, I know there was talk at, talks at the state level that, you know, Governor Little had planned to give, get some money out for infrastructure. Did we have any opportunity to get in that conversation? I mean, is there, can we go after state funding? Is there something out there that we can start? This council could start participating in conversations? I mean, I'm, I'll fight for it, but I need to know what's, what rocks have been lifted and looked under, and where do we need to go from there?
Yeah, and it, I will say, you know, it, it's not from lack of trying. I think there's a lot of people out there, um, I've heard a lot from them recently, that, you know, why, why is the city doing this? Why isn't the city doing that? And we, you know, case in point, and I'm trying not to be bitter about it, but, you know, the DEQ put out, this is talking about water, we put in, while we were still under a boil order, a request for funding for a reservoir and transmission line, and some of the stuff that we were dealing with at that moment, when we're obviously still dealing with it now, and we ranked 40th out of 100 some odd applications. And scratching my head, uh, and did I, did I send it in Wingding font or something that they didn't, couldn't understand? I, I don't, there is a huge, huge demand. It's not just Lewiston, whether it's roads, water, sewer, there is a huge demand, and we can call it deferred maintenance, if that's what we wanna call it. It's that there's been deck, and it's, you look at this, and I, I've talked about it, it's not gonna happen overnight. We're gonna, we're gonna work on the 24 budget, and by golly, we're, we're, we're now on the right track. It's, it's gonna take a lifetime of hard budgets, hard conversations, and, and growth will play a role in it, because growth needs to participate in how we fund these, all this infrastructure. But it's gonna take a long time, and it, it's not, we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have fits and starts, where we have successes and we're gonna have failures, but we need to have the community invested in, we need to improve this infrastructure. It's, and it, it, it's gotten incrementally more expensive, and it hasn't gotten incrementally better in the last, in my time here.
Counselor Tousie, did you have a question?
No, I don't. I'm just trying to come up with some ideas of, I did not intend this to be a downer of a presentation.
For all I.
No, but I, I think it's good, though, for the council.
Well, yes. And I like what's coming up next. I see that as being a partial help with this, but, so, thank you.
I don't think it's a downer. I think you should be hearing from us that we wanna make sure that you get a win, right? I think we, it's going to take time, but the best way to create that momentum is to figure out how do we get a win? And I think when you talk about your top two complaints, that's how we get a win. Let's fix it. Let's, let's tell the public we're listening, right? As a, us, not, you've been listening, but you're limited by our decisions, so we need to make that commitment to you. So I don't think it's a downer. I think it's a, we need to prioritize and do what we need to do.
Yeah, I think, yeah, 21st Street, it's a public perception issue, and I'm, I've been trying to, to get ahead of that, and I think 21st Street, if, I mean, if you're a praying kind of person, it's a great time to see what we can come back on 21st Street with that fiber seal project, because I think it would be, it would go a long way, as, as you said, to get the public to feel like they're being listened to, and their money's actually going to something. The, the downside on that is that, that is our fun, that is everything we've got built up in the coffers right now, is to redo 21st Street, to get it to a, to a state in which we can move forward on, on a full reconstruction design 10, 15 years down the road. The only one thing, parting comment, is Brighton being, the design will be complete in 2023. We're bas, it's 99.9% done. There's no point in stopping or, or moving forward, but I think when that design is completed, and obviously we have time, I think there, there needs to be a deeper conversation. What, what is, what is the, what is the solution? Whether it's Thane or Brighton, you know, is it five lanes, three lanes? Um, you know, what, what are, what are we trying to accomplish? And how can we accomplish that in such a way that it doesn't take forever? So I, I will be back to talk to you about Brighton. I, I think this is the first time you've heard kind of the, the general schedule of what we've, what we're facing, so, um, stay tuned.
Thank you.
Well, Counselor, I'm just gonna throw in two cents here, but when I look at these timelines, 2036, 2052, I think about 21st Street that does not have a base under it, um, you know, it's just, my opinion, it's not acceptable not to address that, and that requires making tough choices and finding money to do that, because if we wanna talk about development and bringing business to town and being successful that way, we're gonna have to compete, and we're gonna have to compete with our infrastructure. The same thing could be said about downtown. We have a lot of need in downtown Lewiston, and, and you, the council, moved that up on the, uh, capital improvement plan last year. You raised that up to a top priority, and, uh, we need money. We gotta find ways to fund that and do that in a timely manner, not talk about these things for 20, 30 years. I don't think that's acceptable. It's not what I hoped to accomplish, but, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but I'm just saying, I think it's urgent that we address these things to our strategic plan and find funding sources to move these timelines up, cause it'll only get more expensive in the future. Thank you, Director, for being here with us today. Anybody need anything before we get to the last subject? Counselor Forsman sure smiles when I say chocolate.
I like cookies, you know?
Yeah, cookie monster here. All right. Thank you, Director. Last item on the agenda. Thank you, here we go. There's surplus properties, surplus city properties, and Counselor Forsman, you wanna lead us in that discussion, please?
Yeah. I realized after we were going right into this that I should have, uh, got copies for you guys to look at, so sorry for that. It's the first time I've presented. Um, so with the help of, uh, Tim Barker and the mayor, we kinda went through and developed a list that we could discuss potential properties that we might be able to, um, sell, get rid of. Um, some, I don't know if it's best if I just pass it around? I think it'd be best if it, if you want me to go make.
Describe it.
Might be helpful, um, to do that, so, yes, okay, sorry. Thank you. Hang on one second. I have everything except for. Uh, the first one, though, I will start to get the discussion started, was the cemetery, uh, by the cemetery that, where that slant hill is. So I don't know if anybody has just opinions to talk about, whether we think that would be valuable, valuable to try to parse off and sell, or keep for reasons we shouldn't get rid of it.
Counselor.
My question is, is, um, we're the, we kinda heard about the plan, um, as far as, does it hurt us to put it on the market? And then if we don't like what we get, we pull it off? I mean, how does that work when, once we say it's surplus, we can't back out, or can we? That's for any, not just cemetery, but any of ours.
Uh, Kayla, are you prepared to answer? Cause I know there's two processes, and I'm gonna get it backwards if I try to say it, but if you're able to.
I anticipated this question.
Cause there's two ways we can win.
I've gotta read my notes, though. Kayla Herman, City Attorney. Um, and if council would like to take a closer look, these statutes aren't very long, but they're in Title 50, Chapter 14. Um, so for cities to convey real property in Idaho, council first would have to pass a resolution declaring that the property is underutilized or not used for public purposes, and the value or minimum price, if any, that the council would intentionally receive for the property. Um, for example, council could get an appraisal at the outset to help act as a guide, but it's up to council if you would want to set that minimum price or not. Um, the city clerk would then need to publish a summary of the resolution in the Tribune, and council would need to hold a public hearing. After that, uh, then the property must be sold at a public auction to the highest bidder for at least the minimum value that was declared by council, if council declared a minimum value. If no bids are received, then the city can sell the property as it deems in the best interests of the city. There are some provisions allowing for, uh, transfers of property, but that's specific to another governmental unit, so property cannot simply be donated to a non-governmental entity, but I'm throwing that out as a potential path forward. Um, and if there was an exchange of real property, um, you would have to find that that exchange was for an equal value. Um, but again, that's sort of as an aside. So the main process for selling, resolution, notice of public hearing, public hearing has to be sold at auction to the highest bidder, but if no bids are received, then council can move forward as it deems in the best interests of the city. That help?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor's question, so Kayla? Thank you, Kayla.
I, I will say after going through this list, that the, the biggest one that least stood out as far as not being used is the, the number one on the top, the East End Park, uh, with 0.35 acres. I guess they used to have a swing set around it, and now it's, it's no longer there and it's not being utilized.
Where is the East End Park?
Cross from Larry's building.
Oh, got it.
I think part of this discussion started with, um, you know, after council elected not to move forward with the fire station. You know, the question from a lot of folks was, you know, what are we gonna do with that property? And so including that piece of property, I'd ask Counselor Forssman if she could help me with this exercise and to take a look at, uh, properties that maybe the city is not using or they're underutilized. And if it would make sense to surplus those properties and put them back on the tax rolls. And then, uh, what we do with that money is another decision. But she has a list of properties here. Some of these were generated talking with, uh, different directors at the city. Some of them were just, um, I can't, Counselor Forssman and I talking. And then I think Community Development submitted a couple of ideas to unworth some properties. So this is the list that we came up with and we don't have to make a decision on these. I think the idea is just to begin this discussion, if this is something council is interested in, is to, um, look at surplusing these properties, underutilized properties, and put them back into the hands of the private, uh, market. And there may be others. Counselor Specklemeyer?
Mayor, um, I did have a comment on the Normal Hill Cemetery. Um, it was a big discussion at our last Urban Forestry and Cemetery meeting. Um, adamantly opposed and they brought up the fact that I think it was in 2017. Um, they had written a letter and they were gonna sell it at that time and it got stopped. So they're a little bit confused of why it's coming up again. So just for the consideration that the committee is way against it.
Well, I, I'll answer some of that. Uh, and Director Barker's in the back. He can always, um, step in here by, I get this wrong, which I probably will, but, um, if you look at the plan for that cemetery, my understanding is it's gonna take up to 80 years to get anywhere close to Southway. Um, the cemetery's looking at other changes like going to more cremations and things like that. So demand's gonna change 80 years and none of us are gonna be here. Maybe Kayla and Bree, but, um, yeah. But, um, you know, whether we peel off the front portions along Southway Avenue, because it's prime real estate, you know, for commercial and it's been looked at before. Um, so it's just, I think we're just, at least my intent anyways, to ask the questions and find out if this is decisions that we want to continue on. This is a chance to look at that while we're looking at other pieces of property and say, yep, we, we're interested in this or we're not interested in. And I know that there are other factors to consider like the Parks Commission and Cemetery Commission, so. Counselor Cleary?
Yeah, I got a, coming on a couple of these real quick, uh, the East End Park. I think Mr. Parker can testify to that. We were, uh, there was somebody that wanted to buy that and they're gonna put a duplex on it. Perfect sized lot. And by God, there were little kids that lived in that neighborhood and they all came trucking into the city council meeting. You want to go up against a bunch of little kids that actually took time to drag a hose out there to water what meager amounts of grass? But it was the only green space they had in that neighborhood. And one got shut down real quick. Don't take on the little kids.
How many years ago was that?
A lot.
A lot of years ago?
I don't know, 12, 14, but, uh, it was every bit of that. But the other, the other, the other comment I have on that, uh, on the cemetery part, you know, because I, I was part of that when they had that, uh, you know, it was a fairly extensive and expensive, um, study of what the future of the cemetery could and should look like, you know? And kind of how they had done it in my recollection of it was basically where the hill starts cresting over, they didn't, from a utilization standpoint, you really, if you get out there on, on a slope and say you're planting gram and gram on this kind of a hillside there, there's no sound barrier to keep the sound down from, from Southway. So I thought at the time that that was, you know, perhaps kind of at the break or the topographic break at the top, that the, the land down there adjacent to Southway was gonna be fair, fair, uh, fair play to, you know, get rid of and keep it up on the top. You know, maybe use that money to help extend the irrigation lines out there, so. I may have missed something on that.
Counselor Lick?
I'm just confused as, so the cemetery wanted to sell in 2017, council shut it down. Now we've talked about it, but they're now really against it or?
Reverse that. It was proposed to sell and then, uh, commission wrote a letter to get it stopped.
I did, we, we went over land west of 8th Street near Modi Park. Um, and that's pretty much not gonna be, be an option. It is protected, um, for storm or runoff in wetlands area. Could be future Modi Park conservation expansion is what is, is obviously you guys see here. Um, it does, I guess, sometimes get used as extra storage or people put things on it and kind of encroaching into it if I have my area correct. Um, but just to kind of help, I guess, we announce that as a, I don't know if we want more discussion on that, but there's not a huge amount we can do with that.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Towsley?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the efforts to, um, tabulate this, this list. I really do. Thank you for doing that. And I think these are all things that can be discussed in the future. We've got to start here. And I think going down to the developed properties, I think those are important things also to talk about. And we're gonna have hard conversations about those if we want to be able to make some moves like we're talking about with, we, we, we have to, we have to dig deep if we're gonna be able to fix the infrastructure in a way that's timely and that any of us will get a chance to see it. No. Thanks. Thanks. And so I would, I would like to peel off a few of these, maybe each work session we go through or even, you know, rather than just a big block that's a little too much to chew right now. But I, I, I want to go through these and I want to get input from people as to how that feels. And I, I, I hope if I've got a group of neighbor kids showing up saying, hey, we take care of this, this is a place where we play ball, um, I want to know that. And so that we're making decisions based on needs of a, of a neighborhood too. And so I don't, and I'm not sure how to break them up into groups, but. It's something we could be doing rather than, I mean, would you, how do you eat an elephant, right?
Counselor Lick?
So I guess my question, these weren't really done in any particular order, but when I look at them, so obviously the cemetery, we're gonna probably get some feedback. Um, Fifth and Brighton, I think we have public opinion, uh, good basis as far as, uh, whether or not that's prime real estate and, and whether or not it's something that we could create revenue for the city. I mean, that's how I would, I guess, is where are we at with who, who comes to the table for each line item? And that's where, um, you know, when I look at, um, things like 23rd Street and 13th Avenue parcels, no plans for development, but public work may utilize this, question mark. I'd like to know more. What does that even mean?
Yeah.
So, yes, I agree that it'd like to make decisions today, but I think there's some pieces of property for sure on here that we could, first of all, get revenue, put things back on the tax roll. But also, when you think about everything that we as a city say we'll be responsible for, we're responsible, which means we have to staff it, which means we have to maintain it. That's all cost money. And that's why when we talked about the $160,000 mower was, is there a way, are we mowing things that we don't need to? Are there relationships that we need to have that conversation with of, so that the cost of that doesn't feel so heavy on, as we try to make prioritized budget? So I see some numbers on that list I would like to explore.
Yeah, me too.
As far as, as Towsley said, is with kind of chunking it out and taking it in bites, I think one topic would take a whole discussion is maybe the consolidation of city services. Uh, putting that in a separate work session just to talk about that, because I think that could take some time. Um, and that would be maybe combining buildings, um, getting rid of those within that. And so that's just kind of, I guess, a direction if that would be, is to maybe go, at least chunk, that would be a good direction to chunk this, that out to be as part of one discussion.
I agree, but I think Carnegie Library and my Fenton Gym are two things we could, you could get pretty swift conversation.
You have to speak up, counsel.
Sorry. I'm happy.
People at home need to hear what you're saying.
I believe the other two locations on that are conversations that I don't think should take very long. Carnegie Library has a tenant that is very popular and supported. Having a conversation with them, Fenton Gym has a lot of costs associated with it. Um, you know, who's using it right now? If it's not us and our programs, I think that sways us to say, let's see if somebody wants to own it privately.
I can't hear a thing.
But she's from the historic.
Let's know if she can comment.
Who is she?
From the Historic Preservation Group, I think she's in.
Uh, counsel, I'll leave that up to you if you want to take system comment.
I'm in the Historical Preservation Commission, I've been on the board there. And I just was gonna, um, on the, for the library, we are kind of, um, it does need a lot of things.
You have to come up here.
Took a podium.
State your name.
My name's Miranda Riggs.
When you get here, so people here, if you're online.
I just wanted a quick comment. Um, I'm on Historical Preservation Commission and just where you're referring to the library, that's something that we've been looking at to try and find some funds and grants at different places because it has a lot of upkeep that needs to be done. It needs painting, outside of it is deterioring. I think we're gonna have it, it is the city's responsibility. I think you're gonna have another civic theater type situation if they don't submit it's on that building. That was my only comment.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, well, um, Counselor Forssman did a, I think, a good job of putting this list together. And I, I don't know if this is something that, uh, you want to take and study, you know, and come back another time. But I think certainly it's very appropriate for the council to look at these underutilized properties now. Um, and possibly make decisions on a few of these. If not, then the decision would be to put them away, so.
Mayor, can I make a?
Counselor Forssman.
Motion, maybe? Okay. Um, I was thinking, if we make a motion to put development properties that could be discussed as its own, uh, agenda item on a future work session and then another work session for properties that city pays in lease for or has a lease to maintain as park. So each of those in their own work sessions, not, not all, but like part of individual work sessions. Would that work? Do I need to say dates?
Uh, counsel, do you have a date or a month when you'd like to do that to make it more specific? You can just pick them up for a work session, special session, what would you like?
Uh, can we?
So the next available work session would be August.
Yeah, okay. My calendar, I want the, what's gonna be in August, but yeah, what's in August?
I couldn't really hear your separation. What were the two you wanted to separate?
So developed properties that could be discussed in one work session and then properties that the city pays a lease for or has a lease to contain as park in another work session. Start out, so we can start chunking this.
But wouldn't that be a huge conversation with all of?
If this would be one and then that would be one. Correct.
Which I mean is still a lot.
Yeah, still a lot. I agree. Yeah, I do agree. I mean, we could break it out even more, but I don't.
But I think that it, I mean, we've talked about consolidation of city services. I think, um, Valerie has done a lot of work. And of course, we went to, um, Regent to explore what the options would be for actually putting them back together. I, I, I think if we had the outside work of the department staff to develop, you know, what is the cost savings of utilities, those kind of things? And we put it on a date, I think that doesn't have to necessarily be long conversation, especially if we get to a bottom line that the staff's done the work to say, here's where we're at and we've seen savings. I don't know that the decisions or the discussion has to be super long. Um, and the, the only thing I fear is we're gonna have some, you know, loophole that we're bound by historical or, you know, conservation and energy owns part of our building. I don't know, we've always got some weird surprise that comes up. But I think if we direct the staff to do the work, it'd be cut and dry as to our decision on that, those things.
I, I would offer a motion that we have it, that we take the chunk of undeveloped properties that could be discussed as one work session, prop, and then another work session for properties that city pays a lease for and has a lease. And then, because we're gonna be hearing from Valerie again about the developed properties. And I think that's, once we have more information about that, then we can have that conversation, knowing more about that. So I would offer that for undeveloped properties for August and properties that the city pays a lease for, for September.
Will we do August like separate work sessions or all in one session?
Well, I think if we have, if we have, if we have to direct staff to look at these properties in terms of more than what you've been able to accomplish in terms of, because, you know, one of them was talking about, uh, public works may utilize this. Well, I want to know more about that. And anything that, that any of our city staff has connections with these, we want to know why we should, why we should not get rid of them rather than, just, I mean, I want more information to make that decision about these properties. And you've broken them up this way, so we can talk about them this way. I would think, I wish we were, I don't want to do special meetings. I mean, you guys are doing budget stuff, that's, you've got enough meetings right now. But my amendment at all is, is my motion, making any sense to any of you?
I just didn't know if you wanted to break up each, like by, like three subjects, like one, two, three properties and then one, two, three properties, or if you just wanted it all in one. That was what my question was as far as your amendment went.
Let's try one meeting. If it doesn't work, we can, we can table it.
And you said August?
In a work session. Yes.
I'm okay with that. I can second that. I don't know about that.
For which items, counselor?
For the undeveloped properties that, that should be discussed for August.
Only, okay.
Yeah. And then the properties that the city pays a lease for, for September.
That was developed properties for August, right?
No, properties that the city pays a lease for.
I think the developed one, I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna have to work with staff because that's, that's actually a lot more work than just.
Yeah.
Putting together some simple numbers on consolidation. That's gonna take some experts in property management and things like that to tell us.
So revisit that.
Whether we're even in the game or not.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll try to summarize the motion. And the motion is to, um, schedule undeveloped properties that, uh, the city could consider for surplus at the August work session and properties that the city pays a lease for and has a lease to maintain as a park at the September work session.
Correct.
Close them up for those dates. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, counselors, do you have any comments, discussion on that motion? Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, Roman numeral six, unfinished and new business, City Councilwoman. Next up, Roman numeral six, unfinished and new business, City Council comments. Comments shall be related to an item currently for the council, shall not be related to an item currently for the council, an item that may come to the City Council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselors?
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
I don't know if I said this loud enough, but Tim Barker was a huge, actually, part of this, even more than I even did. So he, we came together and talked and went through things before the meeting, and then I also met with the mayor. So between the mayor, Tim Barker, and I, this was how we kinda came up with it. So I just wanna make sure that credit went where credit was due.
For Counselor.
I don't need credit.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Too bad you're getting it.
I just wanted to do a shout-out to the LC Warriors. Great season. Almost got it.
Yeah. City boards and commission updates? Any updates? Anyone? And we have some new applications coming through. You'll see those probably next Monday. Mayor comments, you know, about, the only thing I can say is that, you know, I'm receiving a lot of phone calls, emails, text messages, like most of you, over alternative watering schedules and the like. And I just wanna say that I think our city's doing a great job, all of our departments, everybody's working hard. I think we're doing the right thing. Citizens have comments or questions, if they're listening, they should reach out to us and contact us to have those questions answered. We're gonna try to put out some additional information through our social media and website on the restrictions. I haven't talked to the director about it, but they're pretty benign, just additional information, possibly how much water's being consumed in the city, how you can take care of your lawn, these kind of things. It's an ongoing project, and I know that everybody is committed to it, and we're gonna get through it. Agenda topics? Additional agenda topics? Counselors, no? Motion to adjourn?
Second. Oh, I make a motion to adjourn, excuse me. I'll second it.
Counselor Forssman, read a motion, second by Counselor Shorter to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, Counselors.
Sorry, I heard you.